Good afternoon and welcome to the City Club of Portland Friday Forum. At City Club, we bring civic-minded people together to make Portland and Oregon a better place for everyone to live, work, and play. I'm Karen Kirven. I'm the president-elect of City Club and would like to welcome members and guests alike. Our president, John Horvick, is in Boston this weekend to run the Boston Marathon, so when you see him next week, you can congratulate him on that effort. I'd like to welcome those of you here at the Sentinel Hotel and those of you listening on OPB Radio or watching on Portland Community Media. Today, we'll be hosting Multnomah County Commissioner candidates from District 1 and 2, but first, some announcements. The generous support of City Club's corporate and media partners ensures we put on the state's best civic programs week after week. I'd like to thank our media partners, including Oregon Business Magazine. Our current Friday Forum partners and sponsors are Chevron, Gerting Edlin, Morel Inc., Northwest Natural, Portland Timbers, and Schwabie Williamson &amp; Wyatt. We are grateful for your support and commitment to City Club's mission. Please join me in a warm round of applause for all of them. So as you may have noticed from our membership giveaway just a few minutes ago, City Club's annual Membership Drive is underway, and we want you to join. For 98 years, City Club has helped shape what Portland is today through research, advocacy, and public forums, and we are here to tackle the tough problems we face now. Government cannot solve these issues alone, nor should it. That's where our members come in. There's no better time than during our Membership Drive to save money on membership and receive our thank-you gifts like t-shirts, scout books, and tickets to the Oregon Symphony. City Club volunteers will be waiting in the back after the forum to sign you up as a member today. Next week, we will talk about the issue of gentrification and how Portland can invest in better neighborhoods without displacing existing residents. You can learn about City Club events, purchase tickets, and become a member on our website, As always, City Club will be live tweeting at today's event. You can follow or mention us at pdxcityclub, and be sure to follow the conversation by using the hashtag #CityClub in your own tweets. And now for today's program. Today is the first debate of the season. In moments, we will welcome District 1 candidates Jules Bailey and Brian Wilson and District 2 candidates Teresa Raiford and Loretta Smith to the stage. Moderating today's debate is Richard Feeney. Dick Feeney currently consults with Portland Streetcar Incorporated. He worked as TRIMET's governmental affairs representative from 2003 to 2008. Dick served Multnomah County as Chief of Staff for Don Clark in the '70s and has worked for Representative Edith Green. Dick has a bachelor's degree from Portland State University and a master's of Public Administration from the John F. Kennedy School of Government at Harvard. He has received multiple awards for his service to transit, education, and many other public services in Multnomah County. Please help me welcome Dick Feeney to the stage.
Thank you for the opportunity to be here today. I'm Dick Feeney, and I'm honored to moderate the debate for Multnomah County Commissioner District 1 and District 2 positions. It should be noted that Multnomah County was transformative in many ways for this community and even for the nation. First, reform indigent health care. First, to endorse community policing. And the first local government in the state to mention the words "light rail." And the City Club of Portland has been a transformative influence itself for the county, weighing in on many charter proposals, going back to the first Home Rule Charter in 1966. Which brings us to today. We have District 1 candidates Jules Bailey and Brian Wilson and District 2 candidates Teresa Raiford and Loretta Smith, who wish to help govern Multnomah County and transform it even further. This debate will have several sections. First, each candidate will give a 90-second opening statement in an order previously determined. Following the opening statements, debaters will respond to questions written in advance of this meeting by City Club's Friday Forum and research committees and City Club staff. These questions were not shared with the candidates. These are the only questions that will be asked today. There will be no questions from the floor. Keeping time at our debate today is Tony Occhino, former City Club Research and Policy Director. At the conclusion of the questions, the candidates will make a 90-second closing statement. Please be respectful of the candidates, and please hold all applause until the end of the program. And now the candidates. District 1 candidates are Brian Wilson and Jules Bailey. Brian Wilson holds a BA from Whitman College and an MBA from Fordham University in New York. He spent the last two decades helping run his family's small business in Old Town Chinatown, the Cal Bear Company. He is also an active community leader, volunteering for local governments and nonprofits, most notably chairing the Multnomah County Charter Review Commission and the Selwood Bridge Task Force. He led the successful effort to bring permanent, dedicated, stable funding to the Multnomah County Library, the nation's second busiest library system. Jules Bailey. Jules Bailey grew up in southeast Portland, graduated from Lincoln High and Lewis and Clark College, and is an economist by profession. As a three-term state representative from District 42, Jules has been representing Multnomah County citizens for five years, leading on issues ranging from job creation, the clean energy economy, and building healthy communities. Jules Bailey earned an A rating from the 2013 Oregon Legislative Report Card on Racial Candidates for District 2 are Teresa Raiford and Loretta Smith. Teresa Raiford is a St. John's activist. She graduated from Jefferson High School and has attended college. She is currently the interim World Arts Foundation Program Development Manager and is self-employed and a philanthropist. Her employment background includes the Bank of America, Economic and Medical Ministries, and Multnomah County. Her family history spans four generations in civil rights leadership. Loretta Smith was elected Multnomah County Commissioner in 2010, representing north and northeast Portland. She has lived in the district for the past 25 years and is a strong advocate for jobs, senior citizens, young women, and men, leading the Summer Youth Connect Program. She has championed a micro lending program to help local small businesses and hosted a White House Roundtable for Young Entrepreneurs. She is a graduate of Oregon State University and brings more than two decades of experience in the federal government. And now, if I could please invite the debaters to come up to the stage and take their place at the podium. Brian Wilson for District 1, your opening statements, and you have 90 seconds.
Thank you, and thanks to the City Club and its sponsors for hosting this forum. This election matters. Between today and two years from now, we will see the composition of the county board change by at least 80%. Our decision, then, on May 20th, isn't just about facts, figures, political promises, or connections to Salem and Washington. It is about continuity of local government and focusing on local priorities. I've spent most of my life living and working in District 1, all of it on the west side, but I also helped build a bridge between Johns Landing and Selwood, and I know our inner southeast neighbors just as well. In addition to working hard, building a small family business, I have spent almost two decades volunteering in this community for such policy areas as diverse as libraries, urban renewal, good government, transparency. In fact, when I get elected, I want to become the first Chief Accountability Officer, helping the county stick to its budget, developing new plans and ways of helping the constituents, just as we're expected to do, but also to empower our employees and make sure that they have the training that they need to do their jobs. This election is important. I will be effective on day one. We don't have time for learning curves or diluted attention. We need to get the work of the county done.
Thank you. Jules Bailey, also for District 1, your opening statement, please.
Thank you very much. Thank you all for coming, and thank you to City Club for hosting this, and most importantly, thank you to my wife Jessica for taking time out of her busy schedule to be here today. I'm Jules Bailey, and I grew up in inner eastside Portland, and I grew up in a family that was shaped by mental health issues. We didn't always have enough money to make ends meet, but my parents were invested in me and my sisters and taught us the importance of giving back. I went to Lincoln High School and Lewis and Clark College, and I worked my way through school, and now, as an economist, I've led on issues analyzing evidence-based programs in addictions and mental health services. I know the numbers, but the numbers aren't enough. The services that Multnomah County provides aren't just services for theoretical people. They're services for people like me and my family. And I've been in this community my whole life, but it's not about what you do or who you are, it's about how you get things done. I've served in the legislature for three terms, working with City Club, and won awards for my work on clean air, housing, health care, and job creation. I've gotten it done for our community. At the county, we can spend less on prisons and more on human services and education, implement health care reform on addictions and mental health services, take son schools to the next level, and improve our homelessness services to finally make real progress. I've been endorsed by Governor Barbara Roberts, by Sheriff Staton, by Commissioner Smith, and many others, and I look forward to being a champion for equality, for equity, and for opportunity for all of you.
And now, candidates for District 2, Teresa Raiford, your opening statement, please.
Thank you, and for those of you who don't know me, my name is Teresa Raiford. I'm a native Oregonian. I'm a native Oregonian, and the reason that I said my name, and sorry, Ms. Smith, since it was funny to you, is because it was pronounced wrong by Mr. Feeney, and he tried to get it right, so I was just making sure that if you guys want to call on me, that it is Teresa. Let me tell you a little bit about my background, because some of the things that were mentioned, I have done. But when I worked for Bank of America, I was a regional manager for 28 cities within the Lone Star State. I was the person that the bank managers had to call anytime that they had issues with accounts. I created efficiency systems, and I trained several employees at the Ross Perot Building in Dallas, Texas. I left that market to go into deregulated energy, which meant that I had to acquire accounts that were now available to us through mergers and acquisitions. We handled million-dollar accounts. We created that system because the company that I belonged to had just got into that market, which was deregulated at the time. Upon coming home back to Portland, I had a tragedy that happened within my family, and at that time, I became a community philanthropist. I'm not the current commissioner, but I play one in my community, and that's north and northeast Portland. So at this time, using the skills that I learned in mergers acquisitions, building systems, navigation of products and services, and helping banks make a lot of money, I want to bring that better system of efficiency to our community as a local representative and an elected official. Thank you.
Thank you. And Loretta Smith?
Thank you. I first want to thank the City Club of Portland for organizing this debate, and I also want to thank all of you for being here. My name's Loretta Smith, and I am currently the District 2 County Commissioner. It has been an honor to serve all of you, and I look forward to another term. For the past four years, I've been hard at work at Multnomah County. I've championed providing more opportunities for our youth through summer works that has provided 175 jobs for at-risk youth. 175 jobs is not enough. In fact, we need jobs year-round. When I came into the county, there was a void, and the county had a zero investment in youth programs. On my first day, not literally, but on my first day, I started out trying to assist and make sure that our youth had jobs. I've championed providing support services to our seniors that allow them to remain in their homes and live with dignity and with respect. I've also worked to educate them of the dangers of financial fraud and abuse, as well as equip them with the necessary tools to fight against these crimes. I've also championed quality jobs that pay living wages and build strong communities. Multnomah County is a safety net. It is a safety net for vulnerable populations. I look forward to an additional four years. Thank you.
Thank you, and now we will move to that portion of the program where I will ask the questions prepared by the Friday Forum Committee and City Club staff. There are up to three different kinds of questions. I will direct questions to all candidates, each of whom will have 45 seconds to respond. I will pose questions specifically to candidates running for District 1, and then questions specifically to candidates running for District 2. Each candidate will have 45 seconds. Finally, we will move to the lightning round, where I will pose a series of questions which all candidates must answer yes, no, or waffle. They will hold up cards indicating their response, and I will read their response out loud. They will not be given a chance to explain their answer. Question to all candidates. What is the biggest challenge facing Multnomah County, and why are you most qualified for this position? District 1, first, Jules Bailey, your response?
Thank you for the question. This is a critical time for Multnomah County, because the county is on the cusp of three major transitions, and they're all aimed at giving people a pathway to opportunity. We have to make sure that we're implementing House Bill 3194, the Justice Reinvestment Act, correctly, in a way that spends less on prison and more on the kinds of services that we need getting people back into the community. We need to implement the Affordable Care Act well and make sure that we have savings on mental health and on addiction services that we can put back into wraparound services and housing. And we need to continue the progress of making sure that the city and the county are coordinated on homelessness and housing services to give people a pathway out. My track record as an economist and my background in the legislature makes me the right person to lead these transitions and to be an effective commissioner.
And Brian Wilson, your response?
The two biggest challenges are indeed the Justice Reinvestment Act, HB 3194. The fact of the matter is, we simply don't know what the impacts are going to be once that is implemented. It was just only a couple of months ago, so we have to be nimble, we have to be flexible, and we have to understand that the implications of not doing the right thing with the monies that we receive from the state could have vast implications on this community and devastate the county general fund. The other area is the Affordable Care Act. We have to make sure that county health facilities remain bright, attractive places for people to receive services so that we can continue to bill fee-for-service. Otherwise, again, the implications to the general fund of the county could be devastating.
Now, District 2 candidates, Teresa Raiford, please.
Yes, sir, and our two biggest challenges right now are our community's health and our children that are homeless on the streets. Right now, we need to invest more money into our service-oriented outcomes that are coming through the Multnomah County system. We're looking at building on infrastructure, but I think that our service and our direct engagement with the community and the communication that's involved in making sure that they get access and follow-up to the services that are necessary to get the children off of the street, along with the families that are out there. We had a housing forum the other night, and they asked us a certain question, and I said, "We have to look at the face of poverty in our community." The numbers don't knock, and on a national level, we do have the hungriest people, and we have the worst problems happening in District 2 at this time in concern to our outreach and what we're doing about it, so our efficiency matters.
And Loretta Smith, your response?
Thank you. I think poverty is probably one of the biggest issues that we have here in Multnomah County, and making sure that we do implement the Affordable Care Act. What we know is that everyone needs to be able to have accessible and affordable health care. Since we're in the implementation phase of the Affordable Care Act, I think we need to make sure that there's equity within the system, that everyone in Multnomah County is being able to sign up and make sure that they have access to our health clinics, and if not our health clinics, other hospitals and institutions of mental health. Thank you.
Question for all candidates. What are your plans for creating more affordable housing in Multnomah County, and how can we make sure we are not displacing existing residents? First, from District 1, Brian Wilson, your response?
We need more affordable housing inventory if we're going to address some of the most critical and basic issues around housing and homelessness in this community, and one of the ways that we can do that is to work closely with our allies at the city's Portland Ingression, also the Portland Development Commission, and Home Forward. I'm really proud of the work that has been done in this area already with the program "A Home for Everyone," which the City Council of Portland and Multnomah County just recently passed. We now have the ability to, as a community, investigate a single priority, a single set of budgets, a single set of politics around this really tricky issue of affordable housing. So I will work really hard to help that executive committee and then the policy committee below it get founded and funded and start it outright.
And Jules Bailey, your response?
I want to be clear about something, and we heard it here at City Club just a week or two ago from Dan Roman. Homelessness is a solvable problem. Don't let anybody tell you otherwise. You know, when I was down at Central City Concern the other day, I was hearing from a gentleman who was talking about how he'd gotten out of jail and couldn't find housing or a home. He ended up using, again, relapsed, ended up detoxing in the emergency room, and told us that that cost $500,000 to the system. We could have rented him an apartment for 40 years at $1,000 a month for that kind of money. We can spend more on getting people the help that they need, that frees up services to be able to construct the housing units that we need. If we had 4,500 more units of affordable housing, we could clear out the shelters. We know how to get this done, and we can do it.
And District 2 candidates, Loretta Smith, please.
Thank you. I think we have a couple of different opportunities. One of the partnerships that I've been working on in the last year is with the governor's office in terms of building, creating more livable space in terms of brownfields. We have more brownfields in District 2 than any other place, and if we're not going to be able to move that urban growth boundary out, we need to figure out how to use the space that's within the boundary. Second, we need to figure out how we're going to put workforce development dollars into the system, particularly for our vulnerable communities. I think we have to work on both of these tracks in order to create jobs that will help folks get the affordable housing that they need.
And Teresa Raiford, please.
Thank you. Well, I want to piggyback off what Jules had said and to add into what I think that we need to extend the services that Dan Saltzman is putting out there now as far as the workforce housing, but through the county directly, we can help solve some of the problems with some of the people who have sustainability issues, because if we do extend our opportunities to build more workforce housing or more affordable housing, what's to say that these people, because of the issues that they're dealing with through their health or their emotional health or some of the things that have them in a homeless situation, because poverty is an issue, what is there to say that they won't fall back into being homeless or not being able to afford the affordable housing? So I want to extend on a relationship with the city to expand our services so that we can help provide workforce housing opportunities for everyone.
This is a question for District 1 candidates. How important is it to create transparency and accessibility of budgets and contracts related to county services? If important, how do you propose to increase transparency? If not, why is what we have sufficient? Jules Bailey, your response, please.
Well, clearly, transparency and accountability of county budgets is critical. You have to be able to get in and look under the hood, and have to be able to have organizations like City Club be able to do that on behalf of the public, and I commend City Club for the work that it's done. In the legislature, I was proud to help create the Oregon Government Transparency Website that's putting thousands and thousands of documents and budgets online for people to look at, and that's made agencies more accountable. We need to do the same thing at the county to make sure that contracts are clear, that agencies are held accountable to their performance metrics. We need to focus on results and outcomes, and I look forward to prioritizing that and making that happen.
And Brian Wilson, your response, please.
The good news is, the county actually does a pretty darn good job of this already. There's a lot of accountability, there's a lot of transparency. There can always be more, but we have to remember, we're coming off of almost 12 consecutive years of budget cuts, and that's tough. That means that there's fewer people at the county to do some of this important work. However, once I'm there, my proposal is going to be to transition from a current service-level budget to a priority-based budget. That will give us the ability to really look and analyze all the programs and services that the county does, rank them, and compare them to the mission of the county, know whether or not they are doing the job that we think they ought to do, and that's going to push us down the road a lot further. But that takes a tremendous amount of investment, of time and energy, of both the electeds and the budget staff at the county.
This is a question for District 2 candidates. A new county charter review commission will be appointed by the legislature in 2014. What are some of the ideas you will advance to the commission for its review? First, Teresa Raiford, please.
Okay. Well, some of the ideas that I have are along the lines of getting people like myself in the room with people like yourselves. One of the things that I proposed on my platform is that we create a new mechanism to create civic engagement and community direct engagement with the county. One of the things that they said about the last question was that we needed to engage because of transparency. Our charter system, if we're going to bring that in and if it's going to be something that is going to be essential to the county, it will have to help us create that mechanism so that we can communicate better and so that we can have more direct functional outreach and follow-up with the community citizens in Portland and Multnomah County.
And Loretta Smith?
Yes. According to county charter, a candidate and/or an elected official only has the opportunity to serve eight years. What I would be pushing for is, of course, to take away term limits, so I could be back here in four more years to talk to you. But that's an issue, and one of the other issues that we've experienced this last year was, you know, one of my colleagues, Deborah Cifori, she had to quit her current job, and she was a huge champion, just like the rest of us, for homelessness. She had to quit her job to run for the chair spot, and I think that the charter needs to be changed to make sure that when you have good people who are already in office, that they're not made to leave office to run for another office. So that would be one of the issues that I would try to tackle in charter reform.
Question for District 1 candidates. According to the Oregon Environmental Council, the annual cost of health care due to air toxics in Multnomah County is at least $125 million and costs the metro area over $200 million annually. Because of the prevalence of these health issues near transportation corridors and in lower-income neighborhoods, most cases are treated in the Medicaid/Oregon Health Plan Systems. How should Multnomah County assume the leadership role within the metro area to address this issue? We first hear from Brian Wilson.
It's absolutely a critical question. The Portland-area airshed is increasingly becoming toxic, and we are not regulating some of the toxins that we should be. So we need more testing stations. We need to work with DEQ. We need to work with the federal government and the state government to make sure that we have the tools that we need to measure these things. As a leader in public health, Multnomah County's role is absolutely critical. The health clinics need to be prepared to address the situation that presents itself when a patient comes through the door suffering from anything that is directly related to these air toxins. Beyond that, we need to be a strong bully pulpit and work with all of our partners in the region, all the local governments in the region, to make sure that we develop guidelines that we can then push up the stream to DEQ and the state to help get a better handle on what we can do to actually solve this problem.
And Jules Bailey?
Air toxics is an issue for our entire county, but it is particularly an issue of environmental justice, and I am proud of the work that I did in the legislature on air toxics, earning a Clean Air Champion Award from Neighbors for Clean Air, and also partnering with the City Club on your groundbreaking report on air toxics that presented in front of my committee. That led directly to helping DEQ increase funding for air toxics monitoring stations and also legislation that requires and incents construction projects to use clean diesel equipment and off-road diesel engines. As the county does its own contracting, we need to make sure that we have more clean diesel that's out there in construction equipment, and we need to expand health impact assessments to make sure that we have a really clear view of the challenge. We'll get it done. We'll get it done.
And now a question for District Two candidates. County-owned bridges are critical gateways to downtown Portland, and biking is an important means by which people cross these bridges. How can the county make bicycling across its bridges safe and comfortable for all types of riders? And how can it reduce conflicts between people using different modes of transportation? We'll hear first from Loretta Smith.
Thank you. One of the things that we do, and I think I need to probably tell the people, that we own 26 bridges in Multnomah County in all of the Willamette River bridges. And what we have to do now, we get our dollars from the state and some dollars from the federal government. Currently, in many of the bridges, they're not equipped to hold additional bike lanes. We're going to have to figure out a way to bring in additional dollars to be able to expand some of those bridges. There are only two bridges in Multnomah County that have the ability to have pedestrian and light rail over their bridges. But we need to figure out a way how we can bring in additional dollars to expand those bridges.
Teresa Rayford, please.
And do you mind replaying the question? I'm sorry.
The county owns bridges, and they are critical gateways to downtown Portland. And biking is such an important means by which people cross these bridges. How can the county make bicycling across the bridges safe and comfortable for all types of riders? And how can it reduce conflicts between people using different modes of transportation?
Thank you. And that's what I thought. I just wanted to make sure. Well, one of the things that I know as a person that's organizing in the community and working with a lot of different organizations and different means of continual issues, the bike lanes that we currently have, I think that any money that we have, we need to start planning for future maintenance, and at the same time, we need to set goal lines, goal lines right now for basically creating repairs and safety systems where they're existing at this time, because we have a lot of riders that are riding unsafe. We have a lot of community members that feel like it's not safe for them to cross streets or for them to even drive because of the bike ridership, and there shouldn't be a conflict there. I think that safety first is a measure that always needs to be used when there's an efficiency system that needs to be repaired. Thank you.
Going back to questions for all candidates. A few weeks ago, at a Portland City Club Friday Forum, interim chair Marissa Madrigal spoke about the county's role in caring for people with mental illness. What is your assessment of, first, how well the county is doing in this arena, and, second, what, if anything, needs to change? We'll first hear from District Two candidates, Teresa Rayford.
Thank you. And I got a question like that the other day. My campaign headquarters is located across the street from the Multnomah County Building on Martin Luther King and Emerson. And every day, I'm looking out of my window, and there's a woman that walks up to that building, and she wears a different wig every day, but she stands out there and she yells at the cars. She crosses the street, she stands in the median, she stands across the street at the police station, and she yells and she kicks at the cars. This is at the Multnomah County Health Department. Our health providers in this community that work for Multnomah County should be the first responders in any issue that has to do with mental health that's happening on our streets. There are homeless people that are living in the corridors of that building, and they have to be experiencing mental health issues for them to still be on the ground, but there's no one coming out to do direct outreach for those families.
Loretta Smith, please.
I think there are a couple of different areas that we need to support in terms of giving training and education to our law enforcement, because we're responsible for the jails. We need to make sure that our folks are all trained up. Forty percent of all the inmates that are in our jails come in with a mental health issue. And I think we also need to make sure that our CSAC program that's run on the east side, that they have additional beds to serve people who can just walk in. We did have a partnership with the hospitals here where law enforcement, police could drop off folks. We don't have that anymore. We need to make sure that we put additional dollars to expand programs like that.
Now from District One candidates, first, Jules Bailey.
Mental health is at the center of so many of the challenges that Multnomah County seeks to address, and it's a personal issue for me. I've seen firsthand in my family what a challenged mental illness can mean to a family and how important it is to have health care coverage. The Affordable Care Act gives us an opportunity to expand coverage, but we have to make sure that we're doing it right, and we have to connect the dots. I heard from a gentleman the other day who'd gone through a number of different services, and he said, "You know what I found out? For the people whom the system works, everyone got connected." It's about making sure people can get mental health services, but also housing services, job training services, and a pathway out of the system, not just to be stuck in it. And we have to make sure that we're working better with law enforcement, because we can't have people with mental health crises ending up in jail or in the hospitals, because those aren't the right places.
And Brian Wilson, your response, please?
One of the interesting things that I've learned over the course of time is that looking at mental health care in Multnomah County through a national lens, sadly, we're doing better than most, and that says something. But as Mr. Feeney pointed out earlier today, Multnomah County is a leader in this country in many ways. And so is it appropriate for Multnomah County to continue being a leader in developing mental health systems that really work? For example, we do use law enforcement as a first response to mental health crises. If we had a way to notify mental health providers when somebody comes into contact with law enforcement in a HIPAA-compliant and private way, could we divert people from the jails and hospitals and get them into the mental care system that they need, the medications that they need to stabilize? Those are the kinds of things we need to look at.
And now again for all candidates. Gay and transgender Oregonians have been recognized as a protected class under Oregon law since 2008. However, national research indicates there are significant disparities in educational attainment, access to health care, public health prevention efforts, and more. How can Multnomah County ensure that the best outcomes for gay and transgender Oregonians...
I think Multnomah County, we have been a leader in issues around the LGBTQ and transgender. What we know is that there are issues around, let's just say, when you want to go to the ladies' room or the men's room. We paid for two bathrooms at Multnomah County on the Hawthorne Building so that we could have transgender restrooms for our employees and for the folks who come in. I think doing more of that, we already have health care in our health system, in our health benefit package that addresses this. I think we could do more, but I think we are doing a lot of outwardly issues around transgender in Multnomah County already.
That was Loretta Smith. Now we'll hear from Teresa Rayford, please.
Yes, sir. And I was going to say, any type of discrimination is wrong. As the Multnomah County, an enforcement agency, has to make sure that they take any type of discrimination, whether it's against a person because of their ethnic background, their gender, or their choice in who they want to love. I was talking to someone the other day. I had about five people that came up to my office from the county. These people were all different types of colors and different genders, and they had all dealt with some type of discrimination that was happening in the workforce. The county did not take it seriously. They didn't enforce it to the part of the union that should have taken it seriously, and all I had to do was call the ACLU. There's a problem when we, as managers of departments that have to deal with humans, that have to deal with discrimination of all types. If you look around this room, all of us have had to deal with something. If there's no, from the top up, going to start as a champion or someone with courage to document and file complaints to help people live a regular life, then that is just wrong.
And now from District One, Brian Wilson, please.
I suppose I may have a bit of an unfair advantage on this question, being the only openly gay candidate to be running for Multnomah County Commission. But what I can tell you is it is imperative that the county and the county's employees, the frontline employees, learn to tell their stories so that they are accessible to the people that they are serving, whether it is gay, lesbian, transgender, questioning, or people of color. It's about how we present ourselves. Are we compassionate? Do we have a real understanding and desire to work with people? And that is at the core of the county's mission. It does invest in the human side of the sustainability question. So when I'm the county commissioner, I'm definitely going to be a friendly ear, but not just for gay and lesbian and transgendered persons, but for all people.
Your response, please, from Jules Bailey?
This is such a critical question. I am fiercely, fiercely supportive of the freedom to marry, but that is not enough. We have to make sure that we have county services that are directed at the particular needs of LGBTQ individuals. This is a personal issue for me as well. My aunt is transgendered and has seen firsthand some of the challenges that transgendered individuals can face in the criminal justice system. We just saw an article from Willamette Week that exposed a lot of the extent of this challenge. It is incumbent upon us to get our hands around this and to make it better. I was proud to be the only elected official who is a member of the Trans Justice Rights Task Force, coming up with policy recommendations to improve the system. Multnomah County needs to do a better job of partnering with SMERC, with the Q Center, and with other service providers that make this a community for everybody.
Portland is known as a place where young people go to retire. But how can Multnomah County ensure that our 60-and-over population has the resources they need to live independently in their own homes as long as possible? Here first from District One, Brian Wilson.
That's a great question, and one of the county's primary missions with its Aging and Disability Unit is to help elders find a way to stay in their homes as long as possible. One of the reasons that I helped pass the stable and dedicated funding for the library system was, again, to help promote programs that help people stay in their homes, to learn and find ways of learning the services, access the services that they need. The longer we can help people stay independent in our community and not reliant on other services, of course, the more compassionate we can be and the safer they can feel. So whatever the county can do to improve that, it's all good.
And Jules Bailey, your response, please?
Thank you. I'm proud to be endorsed by the Oregon State Council for Retired Citizens in this race and have worked hard in the legislature on things like making sure that we're preserving the senior property tax deferral program so that it can be functional into the future while making sure we're taking care of folks that rely on it now. We also have to make sure that we are funding things like Project Independence, which I helped fund in the legislature, because it is critical to keep folks in their homes and make sure that they have access to the services that they need. You know, my mom is trying to retire. It's difficult with the cost of living that's out there, and she pays a huge property tax bill every year and is thinking about having to sell her house. We have to make sure that people can afford to stay in their homes, that they have the resources to do it, and then we have highly trained and competent frontline workers who can help implement some of these programs.
And now from our District Two candidates, Loretta Smith, first, please.
Thank you. When I was elected in 2010 and I went through my first budget cycle in 2011, one of the things that I noticed was that Project Independence that serves seniors who want to stay in their homes and they get assistance with cooking and cleaning and that kind of thing, it was in the one-time-only money bracket. And I was like, why do we have the seniors come here every year? They jump up and down, they tell us not to cut the program, and why do we put our seniors through that? Well, I know a senior who lived next door to me, Mrs. Watson, she used those services. It didn't make sense. So what we did after that, I really tried to influence the next budget cycle so that Project Independence, not only was it in ongoing money, but it got expanded.
And Teresa Rayford, please.
Yes, sir. And District Two, north-northeast Portland, the families that live there predominantly are in poverty. A lot of them don't own the homes that they live in. They're not in stable places where they're going to, you know, build their families and retire and do all of that stuff. A lot of them are coming back home from jails, a lot of them are coming through the juke system that, you know, put them in incarceration, and a lot of them are living in miracles, or they're just moving out east. Those families need structure and stability. There's a bottom-up approach that has to happen with the root problems that exist in those families, and that comes from our mental health services, our direct outreach for safety and crime, and some of the things related to hunger and education that we can provide through the county. We have to create stability before we can say that we're going to keep them in the homes.
Sun Schools have been successful in many communities throughout Multnomah County. How would you seek to strengthen them? First from District One, Jules Bailey.
The Sun Schools program is a remarkable program, and I look forward to strengthening it and to expanding it. And we have great partners in the community that help us implement it. The Sun Schools program could do even more. Already, we're working on childhood development centers, school-based health clinics, and integrating food pantries into schools. I think we can do more than that. I think we can integrate even more daycare services for families that are struggling to find it, and also make Sun Schools a center for arts and music and wraparound services that make a well-rounded, rich educational environment. I'm proud of the work that we've done on expanding access to education in the legislature. I think at Multnomah County, we can help make sure that kids are in the classroom, fed, healthy, and ready to learn.
And Brian Wilson, your response, please?
The Sun Schools are a remarkable program, and they are already doing so many of the things that Rep. Bailey just mentioned. It's fantastic all across the communities. Of course, we want to strengthen funding for them. We also want to make sure that we are getting the outcomes from the programs that we want to see, and that is not necessarily going to be a cookie-cutter approach across the entire county. Different sections of the county have different needs, so we have to be responsive and nimble and know what we're doing. It's remarkable to note that of the 72 Sun Schools, and I believe the county current budget is just going to expand that by another 10, only two are in southwest Portland. There are needs in southwest Portland that have not been met for many decades, and so we do need to expand the Sun Schools program. We need to be thoughtful about how we do it. This is not a panacea. It's a partnership with the city and with the schools, and we've got to keep on making sure it works best for us.
And Teresa Rayford, your response, please?
Yes, sir. And I like doing collaborations. I think that with our bully pit that we have with the Multnomah County Commissioners Board, that we need to use it to strengthen our relationships with the corporate partners that we have within the communities. I think that in the high-poverty communities and some of the other communities that don't have the Sun School, when we talk about expansion, we should also think about career-focused goals for our youth, because we know that a lot of them are not graduating from our school system, and we know that if you don't graduate, it's going to be harder for you to be competitive in the working market. If we don't want to raise a generation that's going to experience the intergenerational poverty that's happening here in Multnomah County right now, we're going to have to come up with innovative ways to utilize our partnerships and to connect our resources through programs like the Sun Schools. Thank you.
And Loretta Smith?
Yes. Currently, we do serve a lot of the Sun Schools, and I think we need to give additional dollars to wraparound services that will deal with rent assistance, homelessness, and some other dollars for health care. One of the ways that I try to help the Sun Schools in the past couple of years is to try to improve that by adding additional dollars to that. The other issue is, when you talk about Sun Schools, it's just not elementary schools, they're high schools. I put an amendment into the budget last year that would help Madison and Jefferson Sun School to make sure that they had a level playing field and that they were able to get $50,000 to help them build their fields. You have to be able to partner with other agencies in other districts to make sure that you serve all the kids and that there's an equitable way that we spend our resources.
Now we're going to move to our lightning round. And all candidates will be asked the same question, and their only response will be yes, no, or waffle. They each have cards indicating their responses and will need to answer as soon as I am done asking the question. I will read their responses out loud. They will not have an opportunity to expand on their answer. How have you decided to vote on Measure 26156, which creates a water and sewer district with an elected board? Jules Bailey, District One, says no. Brian Wilson says no. Teresa Rayford says no. Loretta Smith says no. Do you support the freedom of gay and lesbian couples to marry? Jules Bailey says yes. Brian Wilson says yes. Teresa Rayford says yes. Loretta Smith says yes. City Club of Portland has launched research committees to study likely ballot measures for the November 2014 election. How will you vote on these likely ballot measures? Women's Rights Amendment? Jules Bailey? Yes. Brian Wilson? Yes. Teresa Rayford says yes. Loretta Smith says yes. How about on the legalization of marijuana? Jules Bailey says? No. Brian Wilson says? Waffle. Teresa Rayford says? Yes. Loretta Smith says? Waffle. The Religious Exemption Initiative? Jules Bailey, District One, says? No. Brian Wilson, District One, says? No. Teresa Rayford says? No. Loretta Smith says?
No.
No. GMO labeling requirements? Jules Bailey says? Jules Bailey says? Require genetic modified organism labeling? Yes. Jules Bailey says yes. Brian Wilson says? Yes. Teresa Rayford says? Yes. Loretta Smith says? Yes. Higher education scholarship bonds? Jules Bailey says? Yes. And Brian Wilson says? Yes. Teresa Rayford says? Yes. Loretta Smith says? Driver cards for undocumented workers? Jules Bailey, District One, says? Yes.
Provide them, right?
Provide them. Brian Wilson, District One, says? Yes. Teresa Rayford says? Yes. Loretta Smith says? Yes. Privatization of liquor sales? Jules Bailey says? No. Brian Wilson says? Yes. Teresa Rayford says? No. Loretta Smith says? No. Public funding for abortion? Jules Bailey says? Yes. Brian Wilson says? Yes. Teresa Rayford says? Yes. Loretta Smith says? Yes.
Sorry, can you clarify, that's to ban public, or is that to provide public funding for abortion? Is it, if it's to ban it?
To continue to allow it.
I support public funding for abortions.
That was Jules Bailey. This is our last question for the lightning round. The Castle Doctrine. That's the use of deadly force. Jules Bailey, District One, says? No. Brian Wilson, District One, says? No. Teresa Rayford?
Are you saying, let's get rid of it?
Do you support it, or do you not support?
I don't support it.
Teresa Rayford says? No. Loretta Smith says? No. Now, we will now move to the final portion of the program. Ninety-second closing statements from each of the candidates. First, from District Two, Teresa Rayford, your closing statement. You have 90 seconds.
Thank you. And, and just to be truthful, it's, it's quite intimidating to be here in front of everyone here, but I'm very honored to be here today. And again, my name is Teresa Rayford. I'm running for Multnomah County Commissioner for District Two, because I do believe that efficiency matters. I believe that direct community engagement matters. And I've been asked by people within my community throughout the districts to do this for our community as an overall. We want to be included at the table. We want to have a say when it comes to the policies that are put in place. We want to be at the table when decisions are made regarding measures, bonds, appointments, and everything else that happens within local government. We want to be engaged. So I'm running on behalf of our community, as a businesswoman, as a philanthropist, as a native Oregonian, to help make Multnomah County greater than it currently is by bringing direct engagement to the table. Thank you.
And Loretta Smith, your closing statement.
Thank you. Over the past four years, I've had the opportunity to work with amazing people with brilliant minds and enormous hearts in figuring out answers to some of the most difficult questions before us. Questions like, how do we ensure that no person, no family, no child has to experience life through the lens of homelessness? How do we lift our mentally ill or our drug-afflicted and drug-addicted to help them combat their illness and attain FDA-quality of life that makes them productive members of society? We work towards answering those questions through collaboration, thoughtful dialogue, and a sincere and unwavering dedication to creating a society that works for everyone. I've been here on the ground, working for residents in Multnomah County for the past 25 years. Over the next four years, I will continue to show up and stand with this community. I will continue to bring together service users, frontline workers, advocates, and issue experts to identify solutions to problems that must be solved. While working to expand upon the work I've done over the last four years, I also want to pay close attention to our emergency preparedness. I ask that you look at my work, see that it backs up who I am, the commitments I've made, and what I've promised to do going forward. I ask that you work with me over the next four years and make a stronger, more equitable, and, and a more open society. I ask that your vote is for Loretta Smith in May for County Commissioner, District Two.
And now, closing statements from the candidates for District One. Brian Wilson, first.
Well, I want to thank everybody up here today for participating in this conversation. It is a conversation, isn't it? It's something that we are listening to one another and sharing ideas, because that's what makes our community rich and our local government successful. I also want to thank all of you for being here today. This is really important. This election is truly important. With so many changes coming to the county in terms of both evolving programs and change of leadership, the decisions before the voters this May is truly historic. I'm very intentional about my applying to you, the voters, for this job. I submit my credentials as a local community leader, as an activist, as somebody who brings local knowledge and local connections to the job. My compassion for local-focused energy over the past two decades, that's my resume. And to prove my sincerity, I am so intentional about wanting to work for Multnomah County, I can tell you honestly, I have no intentions of going any other place within the next dozen years. This election is important. I hope you will tell everyone you know to vote. I hope that you will tell them the important role the county plays in our lives, being the investor in human capital. And I hope that you will tell them that I have the leadership skills and the local knowledge to get it done and get it done well, because this work matters. And I would be deeply honored to serve as your representative at Multnomah County. My name is Brian Wilson, and I hope to earn your vote.
And also for District One, Jules Bailey, please, your closing statement.
Thank you for all being part of this discussion, and thank you to the folks on stage here for engaging in this process. I'm Jules Bailey, and I am proud of my track record as an economist and a legislator, fighting for economic policies that raise all boats, from closing corporate tax loopholes to creating jobs, to making sure that our government functions better. And Multnomah County is one of the most important parts of our social safety net system. It is, it doesn't have all the answers, but it has that hub where the spokes of the wheel come together. And it's incredibly important that we get it right. I'll never forget, I talked to some friends, Jay and Sharon, shortly after I was elected to the legislature, and they told me that Sharon was pregnant, getting ready to have a baby, but their house was cold and their energy bills were too high. So we worked in the legislature and passed a program that helped create Clean Energy Works Oregon to upgrade homes and businesses around the state. That's now created hundreds and hundreds of jobs, paying good wages, and 56% of all the work has been done by women or people of color. That's the kind of track record that we need, need to give people a pathway out of the system. My name is Jules Bailey. My website is julesbailey.com. I'd ask for your vote, and I thank you for engaging in this important, important discussion.
Thank you, candidates. That wraps up our forum for today. And as our president-elect, Karen Kirven, comes to the stage, let's give today's debaters a big round of applause.
We have run out of broadcast time, and we'll have to stop for the day. As we close, please join me in offering our sincere thanks to our moderator, Dick Feeney, our timekeeper, Tony Yocarino, District One candidates, Jules Bailey and Brian Wilson, and District Two candidates, Teresa Rayford and Loretta Smith. Thanks for listening, and be sure to join us next week for a discussion about gentrification.